Welcome to the Vermillion Local School District's Education Special Meeting. Today, Wednesday, September first, two thousand twenty-one. Mr. Insurance, please call the board.
Mrs. Steph.
Here.
Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Mrs. Russell.
Here.
Mr. Andrew.
Here.
Ms. Dennis. Four members present.
If you would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, all by your own right. My Pledge of Allegiance.
Do I, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, on a mission, under God, indivisible, infinite, just as for our whole.
Have a question. Clear the floor. Have a question.
Wait, wait.
The meeting hasn't started yet.
Well, I still have a question. I want to know whether ninety minutes of last meeting will be read before the start of this meeting, so that we can see what was said last meeting to go on record.
Yeah, we do not have the minutes here, does it, Karen?
Why? It must be on a computer. Somebody's got them on a laptop. Go there. Somebody's got them on a laptop. Not sure.
We have the minutes.
You know the minutes. They're on a laptop.
I want to hear it, Karen. Will you account for it?
I can't hear you.
Eddie, she handed us the paper. I believe this is just the agenda from our last meeting. I don't think it's the actual minutes.
I'm asking that minutes from last meeting be read in the public.
I understand. I just referenced the paper.
They're not approving the minutes from the last agenda, though.
So, so just to be clear, the minutes aren't typically read at the meeting, but we do approve the minutes at our regular meetings.
That's not good enough. That's not true. You read the last meeting. You read the minutes of the meeting.
No, we've never read the minutes.
You did. Absolutely. I'm sorry. Then read the minutes, so we can see.
Isn't this a special meeting, so we carry out?
Yes. I have a question.
Minutes are typically read at the regular meeting. Or they're not read, but they're.
Why won't you read them?
You're trying to remember how you're going to say.
Why won't you read what you said at the last meeting? Why won't you read?
All we do is approve them.
We approve the meeting.
We all read them.
We don't read them.
Well, they're probably weren't at that meeting.
How about, how about this? How about when we get to the public participation section, we will, we will recap, and you can ask any question you want about the previous meeting, and we'll, we'll tell everyone what we said.
No, that's not good enough. We want the minutes read. We, the people, demand it.
The minutes are not for minutes. You're asking your minutes.
I have. I'm here for both. This is a special meeting for master.
How about?
You show me special meetings are definitely in the meeting.
Give us a chart of messages for the meeting forward. Please.
We're not moving forward until you solve this right now. This is the law.
They're not physically here.
They're on a laptop. They're on a laptop. They're on a laptop. And you know they're on a laptop. So don't go there. They're on a laptop.
So go get them and read them. The meeting doesn't start until you read the minutes. We'll wait.
I don't really know how to get a meeting this quick.
I don't either.
First of all.
You guys are legally responsible, all right? For your actions and what you do and what you don't do. You are going to follow rules and do things as possible, or we will replace each and every one of you.
There's a method for you to do that, and we understand that.
We're not going to have a fake meeting here where you just push some bullshit.
First of all, you know.
We're not going to do that.
As Mr. Michael said, you know, this meeting's not even going to take place if, if you're going to continue to just argue over everyone.
Do it by the book. Do it by the law.
I'm not going to argue over it.
Do it by the book.
I'm not going to argue.
Do it by the law. I demanded. The people of this place demanded.
May I just ask a general question? This is my first meeting as superintendent, but.
Why won't you read it?
Why did the minutes have to be approved?
We approve them at our regular meetings.
But why should they be approved? I worked for Department of America for almost fifteen years, and meeting minutes, meeting minutes.
Because it's the law.
But why do they have to be approved? Why can't it just be a sounding of?
That's their bylaws. That's what they agree to. That's their.
The person that's.
So they have to agree. Yeah.
He's disrupting a public meeting.
I told a lot of them, and I, I kind of, I don't agree with what we're saying here. This was called to have them listen to us and them listen. It's not about last month's meetings. I know what they said. We must have seen them or heard them. This is why we're asking for it. Because they said something at the last meeting. And if they put out a record here, and they made it up online. When it comes to that time participating, ask what they said last time. And then you also have a lot of the changes. I'm not on the record.
I know this. You have the minutes. He has them.
They're legally responsible for their actions.
No, I'm not doing. They're housebroken.
Here, here, I need everyone to, to get signed up for a minute, and you need to listen, please.
Well, you weren't listening to us.
Yeah.
We are listening. You continue to, to tell what your point of view is here. You want the minutes. I understand.
Okay.
So, we understand.
That better run thing on the back. Oh!
Y'all need to stop and listen for just one minute.
Maybe stop lying, Scott. That's all we say, Dean. Let's go forward with the meeting, okay? Is it important? Did I come forward? No, we refuse.
Haven't asked for it. They're disrupting a public meeting. They're disrupting a public meeting. It's illegal.
Okay, listen. Can I just say, okay? This is not your meeting. Can I please?
No, you cannot.
Just keep talking. Why? You know by saying what I'm going to say, you're in some deep water.
No.
You'll get an opportunity.
You'll have an opportunity, so I'll be glad to give it to you if you want to stop talking and listen.
I want to put on the record that you guys refused us.
If you allow the meeting to progress, you'll get that opportunity.
Put on the record, they didn't read the minutes. You told them off to one reading, a two and four day. So they made a reading. They told them that they didn't read. Two and four.
All right. Let me just address the minutes. We, to my knowledge, to my recollection, since I've been on this, in, in this district as the superintendent, we have never read back the minutes in a board meeting. I might be wrong. I'm going to go on record to state that I might be wrong, but that's to my best recollection that we have never read the board meetings back, the minutes of a board meeting back at a meeting. If we have, I'll be glad to stand corrected. Just a moment, please. Let me finish my statement.
I'm not interrupting.
Thank you. So, to my recollection, we have not. If we're required to do so in the future, and our attorney advises us to do that, we will do it. At this point, though, to my knowledge, we're not required to do that. But if we are, we will do it in the future. It was not for the purpose of hiding anything or not being transparent to you. I could tell you that.
They're always available to public.
The meetings are on public record. They are filmed. They are taped. You have the ability to watch those meetings if you wish. You can play it back yourself. Now, the meeting, this meeting needs to get started, and it's not time for public participation right now. It's time for me to get up and do my superintendent's report. When you want to come to the microphone, you'll be given an opportunity for public participation at that time. If you want to say something more about this or anything else you want to, you'll have time to do it then. So, that's, that's where we're going to get started here. And if we can't get this started, and I'm going to get interrupted when I'm speaking during my superintendent's report, then at that point, I think we're just going to, I'm going to have to look back to the board at that point and ask you as board members, do you want to continue? That's the way this is going to go. So make a choice. Sir, it's not time for public participation.
Just wait, just wait.
There's not, it's not time for.
It's literally one agenda item away. Just wait.
All right, I'm going to get up and I'm going to speak to you from the microphone. Everyone has an agenda that's placed down in their seats tonight. You see the agenda. And you see that there is a spot for public participation. You will get a chance to come up. There is a time limit on public participation. I can tell you that it's not a very generous timeframe there, as you can see. I don't know how many sign up sheets we have. I know that our board in the past has been pretty generous with allowing people to speak, but there is going to have to be some limits tonight. Most likely, we'll adjust that out a little bit, make it more than two minutes we can make it. We'll have to determine, but let's, let me look at the time, the sheets. I haven't seen how many people sign in. But we've never tried to deny people the opportunity to come up and say what they, they feel or they believe, and we're not going to do it tonight either. So we'll give you that opportunity. So, let me just start by saying this, that I don't have any doubt that the people that are in this room came here as an advocate for kids, and that this is about kids, and that you're here tonight because you care about our kids in our district and what's going on with the kids in our district. So I see the passion. I feel the emotion. I get it. I understand it. But as you know, this mask issue is polarizing. There's people lined up in this room on both sides of this issue. We see it. We feel it. We know it. We understand it. We get it. So, I also have little doubt in my mind that no one likes to wear a mask. I don't care what side of this you're on. I would pretty much think that that's a fact, that no one likes to do it. No one's just going to volunteer to go and wear, wear a mask if they can help it or have to wear a mask. But the reality of it is that this is where we're at with this topic and this subject in our community. So, let me just say this. I can say that our, our board has spent countless hours on this, talking about this, thinking about this individually. I spoke into the board on individual, individually, myself, on an individual basis on this. And that's my right to do that as, as a principal, or as a superintendent, to speak with them. And we think about these subjects and these issues often. So, understand that our board does care about this, and they're not just making a flippant or cavalier decision here. This is not an easy decision to make. This is not an easy thing to do. So, that's, that's that. Just a little bit of history or background of where we were and where we are. We did hold a meeting on August ninth. At that August ninth board meeting, we discussed masks in the community. There were people in that audience that night that did speak. We allowed them to speak, and we talked about this. And at that time, there was probably a majority of the people that were in the audience that were in favor of not wearing masks to school. That's a fact, based on the people that were in that audience. I would think that the majority of them said, okay, we would like or prefer to be mask optional and not wear a mask in school. But there were some people in the audience that spoke on the other side of it. So once again, just like in this audience tonight, there is a difference of opinion about what's going on with this. So, with that being said, at that meeting, our assistant superintendent did say that there was a form from the Ohio Department of Health that was a flow chart, and that we would be following that flow chart for our district. On August eleventh, I put out a school opening report, and it was posted on our website, to our website. And in that reopen, we did say, again, reiterating what was in the board meeting, that masks were optional to wear. But we, I did say within the video that we did, we, we might have to change that based on the conditions or the situation. So you can view the video yourself. Go back and look at it. Go back and listen to it. You may do that yourself. I don't have my exact words there, but it was to that effect. So understand what I'm saying to you. I'm not, I can't at this minute repeat my exact words that were said in that video, but it did say that we may need to change. And I did say that there was a flow chart that we would be following from the Ohio Department of Health, and it was posted on that reopen. So it was there for all to see and all to read and all to interpret and understand what was in. So that was in there. So, now that we've come back to school, and we've attempted to reopen our schools with our optional mask stance, unfortunately, it's started to impact our ability to continue to run the schools the way we need to. It has had an impact on us, and it's made an impact on us being able to do what we need to do properly within our schools. We've got employees that are in key positions, and they're on quarantine. And so, as a result of them being on quarantine, it's put us on the brink in some departments of having to shut down a particular school and go virtual. I would be curious to see in this room who thinks virtual is a good option.
Over minus.
I'm not, you'll get your chance, though. Give it, give it, give it a tough, when you're done, when I'm done, I'm going to speak right now, and I'm not going to be interrupted. I, I think you can. And I think everyone in the room, yes. So, as I said, we're having difficulties in certain departments based on the quarantine, and I don't believe that we want to go virtual. So the only way to avoid this, as a temporary step, is my recommendation that we wear masks. And it's on the agenda tonight for our board to vote on. And it's a temporary measure to see if we can get past this variant that exists. We will reevaluate it, we will reevaluate it at the next October, not the next board meeting, but the October board meeting. And that's what I recommend. That's what I put on the agenda tonight for our board to vote on. So, once again, we can do this by following the flow chart and wearing the mask. That, if you look at that flow chart, that's the only way that we can help ourselves to avoid quarantines. The Ohio Department of Health, the CDC, the American Pediatric Center, and a variety of qualified medical agencies have done the research and verified the use of masks. That they provide protection and they minimize the need to quarantine. So once again, looking at that flow chart put out by the Ohio Department of Health, it verifies that if a mask is worn, it minimizes our need as a school to have students and staff be out on quarantine. Once again, I'm going to reiterate, I don't like the use of masks. I don't, it's not something that I personally enjoy to do, and I don't believe anyone in the room does. However, my job as a superintendent is to make a recommendation to my board and our board, and tell them, and tell them what I'm recommending. And it's their opportunity to take a vote as to what they think they want to do in this situation. So that's where we're at tonight. I'm seeing this as a temporary measure when I'm recommending this to them. I could say that our teachers' union has a stance on this. I'm going to read it. The Vermillion Teachers Association is in support of a mask mandate. We believe that that is the best way to protect students and keep them in school. Our fear is that without masks, we may have to return to remote learning. We know that students learn best when in the classroom, and we wish to give our students the greatest chance of success. That's our teachers' union that represents the teachers in our district. You need to, sir, that's disrespectful. I have a statement right here. It's from our teachers' union, but once again, you'll have your chance to come up in public participation. So, this information is in front of our board tonight. Once again, I know that this is not an easy thing to do. It's not a popular thing to do. And in this situation, as I told you, we have staff that were on the brink of making us to have to go remote. That's not an option that our teachers want. It's not an option that I want. It's not an option that I like or anyone else in the room would like. I, I believe. So, at this point, I'm going to have Pete Shade come up here as the Health Commissioner of Erie County and say what he needs to say about this situation, and then I'm going to come back up to the mic and we'll talk about public participation before we get started. Mr. Shade.
Thank you. On behalf of the Erie County Board of Health, appreciate having an opportunity to address you all tonight. So, you know, this is a contentious issue, obviously, all over the nation. And as the, as the county public health official, I'd like to echo, you know, Phil's statements. I'm a child, basically, as a local health department of the Ohio Department of Health and the CDC, and the, you know, the virus right now, the Delta variant amongst other variants that are in our community, is highly contagious and spreading through airborne droplets. And the common sense measure would be a mask to stop any, you know, or at least knock down the ability for the, for the virus to float through the air and infect other folks. So, you know, currently, the entire county, which we track syndrome, we buy zip code and even drill down further, our transmission rates are through the roof. Almost three hundred people per hundred thousand are infected right now. So that means that the community spread is, is pretty rampant. The, the effort to wear a mask in, at least temporarily, what we're looking for is to, again, knock this spread down, get it down to a safer level, and, and move forward. So, right now, obviously, it's been, the last week, it's been ninety-eight degrees and ninety-eight percent humidity. That's, that's really supposed to hurt the virus, at least to not get out in the air, water droplets attached to it, drop it. The school season coming in now into September, and, and we're heading into the fall, the likelihood of the transmission, the spread is going to be even greater. So, we haven't seen the worst of these curves and all these other epic terms we've all heard for months now. And I, I have to stand by and believe that the, the mask wearing would be something that would really help keep the kids in school. And the quarantine orders wouldn't apply to kids if they had the masks on, as long as they're not symptomatic. A sick kid's a sick kid. We have to get them out of the school until they feel better. But if we can, if we can work together and, you know, try to knock this down, I mean, that's the, that's the best approach we can. Last weekend, spent the entire weekend with the Sandusky administration, and they went virtual this, this whole past week, and it's a struggle. We all know that. And, and because of an outbreak that they had in the school environment. And I think we have a handle on that, it hasn't spread anymore, at least through testing. I don't want to see that for Vermillion. I don't want to see your kids, or my kids, not have, have school or extracurricular activities. Wearing a mask for a while is going to be a way that we can keep them in the school and, and keep them engaged in their extracurricular focus, so.
I think it happens, you don't end up being in school anyway.
I'm sorry, sir.
It happens, you don't be in school anyway, without masks on.
There's a lot of local issues that are, are.
I got some questions to you. You're the House Commissioner. If you would, if you mind, can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
What's the difference between the child that has COVID that's wearing a mask, because, you know, masks are decided daily, all of them.
Sure.
And a child that has COVID without one? It just looks like because the child didn't wear the mask, your lethality against that child versus one that's wearing it. Because they could still spread it.
Don't, don't misread it. The key statement isn't that the kid.
But why?
What's important?
Why?
It's the symptoms we're worried about. It's the symptomology we're worried about.
But as a parent, your kid has COVID, you're going to keep him home, right? We're going to keep you home. Yeah, my kid's home. These are, you know, the five, six, eight, nine children, not really that contagious. And the kid that doesn't hurt kids. COVID doesn't hurt kids. So I don't understand that.
Ma'am, that's not a factual statement. It's not, I'm not going to, I'm not going to argue with any of you. It's not a factual statement. We don't know the long-term effects right now. We're under doing research studies.
Okay, that's fine. That was my question.
Okay, thank you. If you'd like to discuss it with me further.
That was my question, but if you're aware of this.
All right, thanks, Mr. Shade. Sandy, I have one sheet. Has anyone, do you have any more signups? Anyone else that hasn't signed up?
I did.
Please see Sandy. Are you signing on?
Yeah.
She'll, she'll take care of it. All right. I, I can, I can say this, that the rules that we have written down for public participation allow for two minutes. We'll double it tonight and increase it to four. So with the number of people on the sign-in sheet, four minutes is a reasonable time for you to come up and speak. So I can say this, though, that we're expecting that you're going to be respectful and that you're going to make your point and say what you need to say. And whatever you have to say should not be directed toward an individual board member. It needs to be directed toward this topic. And so therefore, please come to the meeting or come to public participation and come up and make your point. So I'm going to ask you to come up and use the mic and address the board when you speak. So, I'll begin by calling your names. Alright, James Allen.
So, first, I'd like to say, you know, I wouldn't wanna be in your guys' shoes, I get it. But, on the record, have you guys made your decision already? And just, on the record, because I just wanna cut and dry, please tell me on the record, have you made your decision?
No, on the record, no, definitely, put it in your honor's resolution.
That's what I just wanted to say, because like I said, the way you talk, and honestly, I'm not being disrespectful, the way the board member talked, a couple statements seemed like it, the decision had already been made, and I understand, you have to do this, and I have to take care of the kids, you have to make your best, and for me, sir. I just wanna go over what I have as numbers, because from the board, that's what I want from you. I want numbers, I want a number that we have to hit. If you decide to put masks on these kids, you better give me a number of what you're deciding as the threshold of why we're wearing the mask.
One too many.
If I ask this guy right here, how many deaths in Erie County this week from COVID? How many deaths, I have zero reported, how many deaths in the last six months of COVID? Zero, because I did my research and I looked up. Now, listen, if people were dying in Erie County at an extreme rate, I understand it, I don't want people dying, okay? But there's something called being sick, we've all had to go through it, okay? Other counties in Ohio may be having other issues, more people, more deaths. We have to look at our community, okay, and make our decisions based on our community. Now, I understand the quarantine problems people are having, I understand that, you guys are gonna leave all our numbers, but we have to make a decision here, not based on what we feel like every week. We deserve that as the people, that if you decide to mask my kid, which my kid wore a mask last year, okay, I didn't fight it. My daughter's vaccinated, that's her choice, you know, everybody has to have a choice. I can go by all the rules, as long as there's some kind of line, flow chart, whatever you decide, whatever it may be, all I ask is that we at least give me a number. I don't want all, oh, when we decide, you know, maybe when it can be, you know, we don't know, that's not good.
Every Friday, we post those numbers to our website, they were on the website last Friday.
And you have, you have a number that says, alright, plus we have this many cases in our school, we're going to mask mandate.
That's not how it can be determined, you have to look at what gets impacted by those cases. So, if the service, for example, gets impacted in this particular school, that's a major factor.
So, what if we mask mandate the kids, what if our cases still keep going up, then do we get to take the mask back off? Well, I mean, what are we, what are we gonna use to justify what, when, how, when they come off, when they go on? I would like to know how you plan on doing that, and I know it's hard, listen, that's why you have your job. It's your job because it's hard and you have to make those decisions. But I just think the public deserves to have some kind of, whether it's deaths in the community, deaths in the county, you know what I mean, there's gotta be something, because just being sick is not good enough to make people wear masks. We had a mask and all the deaths were going up, I wore a mask, I'm not anti-mask, I'm anti, I'm having sense. So, please, all I ask, when you do make your decision, please, for the community that you work for, give us some kind of numbers that you're gonna go off of to make these, because no deaths in Erie County, I'm sorry, kids get sick every year, they get, they die from the flu, I mean, it happens. But, I would just, like I said, if it starts getting worse and we start having deaths, I'm all about it. But I just want some kind of accountability for numbers when we're making decisions, not opinions, not feelings, I don't care about those. So, that's all I have to say, I know you guys have a hard job, I appreciate you guys hearing us, and I, like I said, I wouldn't want your job, but all I ask for is just some kind of, some kind of accountability.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Eric Jones.
Thank you, guys, so, before I start, point and order, there was a microphone, microphone, move that microphone out here. Point and order, guys, according to the bylaws here, the parliamentary authority governing the Board of Education shall be the most recent edition of Roberts Rules. Now, you guys are all elected, you guys should know that, you have to know the parliamentary procedures that sit there. That's unfair that you do not read the minutes, you're required to do so. My name is Eric Jones, I have four students in initiative here. Obviously, we're all here, comes down to absences, right, we want our kids in the school. I don't think anybody would disagree with that, right? So, I have a question, I won't direct it to anybody, but it does need an answer. Under what authority do you or would you issue a mask mandate? I don't find your authority to even issue a mask mandate in the bylaws. So, where does your authority derive from?
It would be the authority to develop and generate policy.
You show me in the bylaws where that is.
Policy, school policy.
No, you show me specifically, because it doesn't exist, I've looked. You have no authority to issue a mask mandate. The only person in this room that actually has that authority is this guy right here. The Health Department is the only one that can issue health orders. You guys are ministers of the school, you are not ministers of health, you have no mandate to be able to do that. You stated in the past that social distancing is not an option, we cannot do that, correct? We're not able to social distance in the school, correct?
Not in all cases, correct.
My son sits six inches from his classmate for seven hours, you cannot social distance. That there's, that's not a question, you have 300 students per lunch period in this room. They cannot social distance, and they're required to take their masks off, it's not a possibility. So, we're gonna go to this thing right here. Under this thing, you need to know a certain definition, and that is direct contact, also known as close contact. According to the Ohio Department of Health, they define close contact as someone who is within within six feet of you for at least 15 minutes total community time, starting from two days before the illness or the onset, until the patient has been isolated. So, if you're passing a student in the hall and you're walking by them and they're not wearing a mask, that is not close contact. Just so that we're all clear on this, now, according to this, quarantine is not required if direct contact has no symptoms and any of the three following criteria are met. The direct contact is fully vaccinated. That eliminates, I'm guessing around 90% of the students will not match that criteria. Secondly, the school requires masks, we do not, we are not currently under a mask mandate. Even if we were, maintain physical distance three feet away, you've already stated that you can't do that. So, you stretch that out, right? So, even if you were to wear masks, the quarantines are still going to happen to your students. There is nothing you can do about that. Point three, in schools do not have a mask requirement, direct contact, if the direct contact was wearing a mask or mandated a physical distance of three feet or more. So, that's us, but again, you cannot guarantee social distance. So, the kids are still going to go home, it makes zero sense to have a mask mandate right now. No matter what, the kids are still gonna end up in quarantine.
Alright, sir, thank you, put your time's up. Colleen Reedy.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Is it okay if I address departments, because I have specific questions that are addressed towards Mr. Shae and then, not to proceed individually to the departments. Okay, I'd like to go through my questions and then you all have a copy of them, you can use some time to look over and, I'll give you the rest of four minutes. To the Erie County Health Department, all due respect, I do have a hard time with the word temporary in this virus.
Much.
We are 18 months into this.
Right.
I have a hard time understanding that. People got the vaccine to reduce the risk of serious illness and hospitalization, but why does that vaccinated person now need to become masked when their illness is most likely as minor as a common cold? Do students after quarantine if someone at their lunch table is positive? But it's safe, it's okay for us to go out to eat in restaurants, and we do not contact trace customers or quarantine customers. Why do our students have to be operating under these policies in school? Is the Erie County Health Department doing all contact tracing and case reporting, or do you put this responsibility on our already overloaded staff? The school board, this is here to stay, and we know this, kids get stuff, this is the next stuff they're gonna get. Looking forward, are you able to provide funding, support, and extra staff for outdoor classroom settings when the weather permits? Extra staff when people get sick, because they're gonna get sick, it might be COVID, it might be a stomach bug, they're gonna get sick. Can there be outside lunch options to eliminate this risk of exposure? Can you purchase the plastic dividers to put up lunch tables? I'm against it, again, it's kids, no socializing, making distance from each other, but it's what we have to do, you have to do to get the dividers up there so they don't have to quarantine, we don't wanna quarantine, that's a big thing, to wear masks. But you gotta do it at lunch, too, or why can't we eat out and our customers, we don't contact trace them? Are you offering remote learning to COVID-positive or quarantine students? If a child goes home ill with a fever or vomiting, let them know when they can return to school. Can we enforce the 24-hour symptom-free recommendations? I can speak with experience, a child throws up at noon, they're back in school 8:00 AM. And my child, three days later, is by ambulance because of a stomach bug and hospitalized for four to five days because of a stomach bug. What are we doing to our immune systems with this? Hand sanitizers first came out, don't overuse them, you're depleting your natural immunity, your immune system to fight off, what are we doing? Parents, these people, the teachers, are doing their best that they can, there's nothing written here for them to follow this. Nobody predicted this, our questions need to go to our Health Department and our County Health Board, they're the ones that are driving this bus. They're the ones that need to guide us, give these people the respect, the time, let's figure out how to work through this. School board, before you make this decision, please look into all options, instead of the district require mask mandate. These kids are top rated a lot, and they are shiny, and they are working hard. You're going to have children to choose to wear a mask, I have four vaccinated, I have one that's not eligible yet, he will, he's coming down that day. He does not wanna be quarantined, the mental health of quarantining these children and has always been necessary, how many of these kids did the quarantine last year, ever come back positive? I was in three of those quarantines, they were never positive, and all those friends came back on the same day. The quarantine policies, I had a child quarantined for the exact same amount of days as a young man who had COVID, and my child never had one symptom. I think we all need to reevaluate how to handle this and what to do.
Alright, thank you, Mrs. Reedy. Joseph Jones.
At the last meeting, I and other parents were upfront with you, and we told you that we would no longer accept a lesser education for our children based on their medical status or we would not enroll our children here if forced vaccination, forced mask-wearing, or social distancing were on the table. We have a right to decide where and how our children attend school. You have the responsibility to be upfront with us and you are not. You rightly feared that we would pull our children from the district, we transparently told you as much. So, let me tell you why we are really here today. It has nothing to do with the COVID-19 virus being an emergency threat, and it's all about the money for following federal and state COVID-19 protocols. I have a question for the board and the superintendent. I respectfully reclaim my time for any and all of your responses. Are you in possession of or slated to receive any state or federal funding and/or grants on the condition of universal masking or any COVID-19-related protocols of anyone, staff and/or student for the entirety of the Vermillion Local School District?
Continue.
I'm asking you a direct question, sir.
Answer.
Mr. Plankton.
So, as far as the possession or condition?
Uh, yes or no, please, yes or no, please.
I'd love to ask.
Let him answer.
Yes or no, please. I'll read it one more time for you.
Thank you.
Are you in possession of or slated to receive any state or federal funding and/or grants on the condition of universal masking or any COVID-19-related protocols of anyone, staff and/or student for the entirety of the Vermillion Local School District?
Yes or no.
I understand your question.
Yes or no.
We have a lot of federal grants, we have a lot of...
I asked you to answer, because I asked our superintendent this morning on the phone, and he told me we are in danger of losing funding if we do not make our kids wear masks.
I answered you about the buses, that's correct.
We know that.
On buses. On buses, thank you.
You've ever had your kids walk two miles?
And then when I asked you where that mandate came from, you told me you didn't know, you have to check your notes. You wanna get up here and you wanna put all of us on site? But you don't even know the answers to the own questions that your citizens, your students' parents are asking, these are our babies.
I answered you transparently by telling you, yes, that we did receive...
That's what he's asking, so tell the truth, you are receiving money by making our kids wear masks.
On the bus.
On the buses when you asked me, thank you.
Being truthful, you're still receiving money by making our kids wear masks.
I was truthful, I answered you. You called me out, thank you.
Understood, and the treasurer is speaking.
So, for the answer to your question, Title 1, no, IDEA, no, IDEA Part B, no. Title 2, no, answer, no, answer 2, no, answer 3, I would need...
My question was any, sir.
What is answer?
Thank you.
My question is any, I will give you time, but I don't need the individualization of it, I need you to give me the answer that I asked you for.
Yes, and your answer's yes, we don't wanna say it.
It's yes, it's yes, you told me that, no, they have to say it. It's yes.
So far, it's no, 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 no.
And I will remind you that if you receive federal money after this, or state money after this, and you say no, you are in violation of a federal prime.
Answer.
Correct. Well, how about if you don't want your kids wearing a mask, they'll ride the bus?
That's not what we're talking about right there. So, are you saying that no, you're not gonna see any federal funds for my previous question?
I am saying that between all of you, trans, the federal government, the answer is no to all of them, except for possibly answer.
What is answer?
How much money is answer, sir, that's kind of important.
You were asking very specific questions and I did not have that information.
It's really, it really is... It's really, it really is important to me that every time you ask your question, you don't have...
Thank you, sir. We're gonna have to...
I specifically stated that if you answered my question, I replayed my time. I'm not done. You guys have committed a crime.
You have committed a crime, but the next person's speaking.
I want to go on record.
I understand. You went on record, thank you.
You guys have broke the law. You broke the law.
Alright, thank you for coming on and speaking.
You broke a ton of laws. You lied to us. And now you will be held accountable. I want each and every one of your resignations immediately.
Alright, thank you. Thank you, thank you.
Did all districts receive some sort of state or funding related to COVID relief?
Federal funding.
I'm not, I'm speaking. The answer was yes.
But it was not, it was not on the condition of masks.
Uh-huh. That's not what he said.
COVID relief funding. No, 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 the bus thing is different, I'm sorry. But there was COVID relief funding that all districts got.
We already know that you guys cannot be truthful with us. We're telling you right now that you're in trouble of going to jail. You need to resign now, or we're going to fall through with legal processes anyway. You might as well lawyer up, because it's time.
So our, our, the, the, the funds are on the way.
You guys lied to us after the meeting, and this money was coming. Federal funds don't come like that unless you know about it, you know how the system works. You knew this money was coming in March. You lied to us when we said that our kids were not going to enroll if masking was on the table. You lied.
Your time is up, thank you.
I respectfully decline. You guys are criminals.
Sir, your time is up.
And I want answers to my question.
Damn!
Your time is up. Patrick Higgins.
Alright, so I just want to start by saying the idea that you, you're talking about having to go to virtual again, that's, in my opinion, holding our kids hostage. And I personally think that because you could look, last year, my daughter was a straight A student before that began. She was a straight A student, now she's struggling. And so the idea that, oh, we have to do this, or we're going to be, don't have to go virtual again, you're holding my kid hostage. Let's be honest. So, one of the things that I'd like to reference is the idea that something changed. So I referenced that page that you were talking about, right? And do you know how many students, how many since the beginning of school, how many coronavirus cases have been in Remilia schools?
Eight.
Your site says two. Your site says you have two.
Had them last Friday, correct?
And you said about, that the recommendation would be to update that information more frequently, especially where everybody's meeting. So, if we're up to eight, that's, you know, still a remarkably low number for us. So, we're talking about eight students, okay? I'll go with your answer. The other thing I want to point out is that we're talking about zero deaths in Erie County for the last, I, somebody said six months, but it's been that long. You know how many kids, and there's been eight kids that have passed away? That is extremely unfortunate. I feel bad for those parents. I feel bad for anybody who loses a kid. But we did have shut down schools because of traffic accidents out front of it. I can guarantee you more than eight kids have passed away then. Here's the idea, guys. You know, we've lost more than eight, eight kids in Lake Erie. We are not paving Lake Erie. So, the reaction, the reaction is overreaction, and I think it goes back to possibly the funding thing. But I don't know why there's this sudden overreaction when we all know that COVID isn't going away. There's going to be, it's like hurricanes. We're gonna go through every letter of the Greek alphabet. One of these might be that serious where it requires a mask. We're not there with this one. Especially at zero deaths in Erie County in the last six months. With eight kids total in the entire state. Then, and that's, by the way, that's under the age of twenty. That's under the age of twenty, so that includes every school-aged kid in the state of Ohio. So, my, my problem with it is this, is that I'm going to need perspective, because I've got kids that are actually old enough to drink, and I've got a baby. And I can absolutely see the difference that this mask mandate has had on kids. I can absolutely see it. You know, and my daughter being in the high school, you know, she's flat out told me that it'd be, dude, you're not gonna be able to socially distance these kids. You're not gonna be able, again, it all comes down to that, guys, and I really truly believe that the decision's already been made, which is why there's a recommendation to, or you institute it. So, I'm hoping you guys do the right thing for our students, because I can't imagine, we all have our, you know, senior yearbook pictures. Imagine what these kids' memories are gonna be of wearing masks, because they have a point zero zero eight percent chance of passing away. Point zero zero eight.
Thank you. Ruben Aston. Ruben. Oh, Robin, I'm sorry.
Hi, I'm Robin Aston. These parents have definitely done their homework, and I don't feel qualified to stand up here at the superintendent's meetings, but...
Robin, if you'd wait a second.
Sure.
Please let her speak.
You know, with all due respect, our students, you know, we're here for them, and I, I, I do have to bring up a point about the teachers' unions that are in favor of the mask mandates. And I think they are representing the teachers, and I'm not sure that this had the whole student thing in mind. I know that when I first came into a teaching position in another teaching county, that they took $700 a month from my paycheck, and I wasn't able to give any input. And yet, all that money was being, I walked into the first, when I was a young teacher, and it was a political rally, and so if this, if the teachers' unions go down and take the money from these wonderful teachers here and use it for a political means, I am not in favor of that. And I just, I just wonder in the future how, how that will be able to be funneled, you know, you know, a political thing to affect our children negatively in the future. It's just gonna be one more thing, more egregious than this in the future. It won't be masks, it'll be something more egregious. And, and, and we keep the students first and foremost in our, in our thinking, and that, that is more important than even these masks, because in the future, it's maybe something more egregious.
Okay, thank you. Heather Nash.
I'll start by saying I have six kids that live in Remilia schools. And since we did the virtual learning last year, my mental health has suffered emotionally, as well as academically, but definitely emotionally. Being home, it's ridiculous. So if this does become a thing, where you guys make masks in order for our, our kids to attend school, they have to wear masks, that is a violation of our rights. It is a violation of our rights. And you all took a oath when you became board members to uphold the United States... So if you make this where our kids cannot attend school unless they're masked, you are in violation and you will be held responsible for that.
Absolutely.
You will.
Absolutely.
Another thing. These kids, especially the younger kids, elementary school kids, they're coughing, they're sneezing, they're picking their nose, they're not, they're not properly wearing their mask. What is it, what is a mask actually doing? If anything, they're more at risk of getting sick, guys. Having a dirty mask on. Medical professionals change their masks out a lot on their ships. These kids are wearing the same mask for six, seven hours a day. They come home with ketchup smeared on the inside of their mask. That's what my kid is supposed to breathe in? Their own germs and bacteria? I mean, come on, nonsense. You could even, the US Surgeon General, Dr. Jerome Adams, who told us that improperly wearing a mask could lead to a higher risk of infection. These kids are not properly wearing masks. I mean, we don't. There's, there's people that are for this mask for their kids. Here, not here. There, there's some here, their, their kids aren't even wearing a mask right now. And they're telling me to put a mask on my kid. They're not even putting a mask on their kids. Why are they wearing them on their kids? That's what I want to know. This is just, there's other, there's other options for handling this. You guys can set aside more hand-washing stations, or set aside time where these kids are going in groups to wash their hands. Just, there's other things that you can do. There, you could, you can give the option to, for, for parents who absolutely do not feel comfortable sending their kids to school without a mask on, let them have the choice to do virtual. Set up, because this, like, this is not going away anytime soon. So you guys need to have another order and plan for, for virtual learning. More teachers, or whatever, and for the, for the worry of these, these staff members that are going home sick or in quarantine. Everything is technology now. You guys can, they can virtually teach over Zoom from home. I mean, that's an option. There's just other options besides, and mandating our kids wear a mask is not a law. It's a recommendation. And I have not recommended my child, my six children, to wear a mask.
Julie Steyer.
Hi, guys. So obviously you know where I stand with this. And I did email, I think, almost all of you guys last week. I just told them I stand on stuff and asked for them to consider some stuff, everything that's already been kind of said tonight. So I don't feel like I need to go back over that. I would say that I would implore, implore you to do what you have said that you do, is that you listen to the Erie County, you listen to Lorraine Health Department, that we base our decisions not on emotions or on opinions, but on what you find is factual. And I would say we have to take that from the top down. Because if we are making decisions on emotions, on feelings, on opinions, that's not gonna last for very long. So, that's it. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Mike Thomas.
I'm on your guys' side. You know, I had COVID, my lungs were permanently scarred. I go out there and do what I want to do. I'm not wearing a mask. They're talking about federal funding for buses. You guys don't even have to give busing transportation to high school students. So they're even lucky if their kids are in high school and they can't afford a car, to get free buses. So, well, they don't have to give you a bus to do that.
Let him speak. Let him speak.
I'd rather have my kid in school wearing a mask than at home on a computer all day. So, yep. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Adam Wilson.
Not coming up and saying anything special. I agree. Everybody's got their own opinion. It's a free world. You do what you want with your kids. I'll do what I want with mine. I, I'm thankful that you guys wear masks, whoever wants. That's your choice. Wear two masks, then that's one less I gotta wear. Okay? There are other options than masking our kids to these schools. There are other options. If you're scared of it, stay home. Offer them, people that want to wear masks, homeschool. The people that don't, let them be here. The teachers don't want them to be here, they want to wear masks, if they can't be here, they're afraid of it, let them stay home. If it's a teachers' union thing, we'll fire them all and we'll bring in new teachers. Because they won't get vaccinated, because they won't wear masks. We'll find the teachers and bring them here. They're good teachers. There's, there's, there's a ton of it. You guys do have a hard job, hard choice. We're the boss, though. These people here, the majority here, not you guys, not what you want personally, not what you personally think is right. It's what we want. We are the rulers here. From what I can see, the majority in this room and everybody I know says no masks. So that's why I want to see this vote go down.
Thank you. I believe it's Mike, I can't make out the last name. M... Oh, yes. Moes, M, Mike Moes.
Uh, this, this is, uh, this is, this is, uh, certainly one, for our, I think, for our generation, probably one more handled public health standpoint, is probably the most bizarre thing we're ever seeing and we're ever gonna see. I think these people have incredibly difficult jobs. They have to, uh, this is a public policy and health policy issue. We have to be very cautious about tying in politics to it. There are venues that we can do that. Remember that these are elected officials. Uh, I think we definitely need to treat them with respect, as long as we have a massive amount of talent or really sort of schoolwork. And we do certainly look to do that every, every three or four years. Now, one thing I think is a couple of things that haven't been said here that we should be very cautious about. We, one is in regards to teachers and buses, buses, people who drive buses. In addition to those who we have working in the schools, we are in significant labor, labor shortages throughout, you know, throughout the country. There are not replacements that are sitting out here. If we lose students, if we lose people in these schools and any of the support services, whether they're our teachers, we will not have the ability at school, as we all heard since, uh, say that. That if we do not have these people, we will not be in session. We are very near losing or in session learning district law. If we don't watch what the rest of that...
We're not.
I'll take it, I'll take it.
The teachers' union cannot hold us hostage with our kids. Period.
It's not the teachers' union.
It is, it is. It is.
You don't have people putting in, as a small business owner.
Alright, please, please let him speak, let him have his say, and...
The next thing that I think is very important to consider is that we are hoping we are within a four to six to eight week window before vaccines can be wide open. Before the human...
Oh, my God.
We don't want vaccines in our schools.
Period.
It's not a problem at all. We have masses of unvaccinated individuals in front of us.
Not a good business.
We are in a different world than we were... That's fine, too.
Not a good business. It's not saying...
You have the right to come up to the mic and speak. Please let us speak.
Mostly what I'm concerned about is the loss of in-school learning very quick. That's my most concern. We have public, we have policies that are replaced by the Health Department. We have recommendations that come down from the governor's office, the Ohio Department of Health. These are things that we have to love.
We don't have recommendations.
I think these are the people or individuals who they have to fight for. Now, I'm not, I did, I, I will take that, but I think we're in...
You're not my child's parent.
I'm not.
So therefore, we don't have the right to say anything to you about such, uh, what I do with my children. So if they're not... They are next, they're your best.
I think we are, if we do not try to work through a, a short time period, I think we're risking all of masks, all of them to school. And we only have a short period of time when the landscape is gonna change, perhaps. That's where we need to get to. And I feel, when we look back on this, a couple of weeks, if we look back on this, if we were three weeks, if we're saying we're three months away, four months away. And we have made it in school, and then there's wider vaccines available to those who choose to take them. And we then have less concentration of, of unvaccinated individuals in one place, we will consider that a success. I hope that we can make that, uh, and I mean, certainly we might not. So, I will leave it at that.
Yes, that was the same thing.
Listen, I'm not being rude or... I want to be transparent, Ross. You just touched your mask, and that alone, the time, the time, the power. You put that mask on, you took it off, you put it on, you took it off. You touched your droplets on there, you're touching my podium, and I'm just being transparent.
All right, sir, your time is up. Thank you.
You're touching that stuff, touching those...
Okay, sir, your time is up. Thank you.
It is, the numbers are, I think, when you start to look for, I think we're, although everybody's concerned about, uh, I would not like to see any child have severe illness. Uh, you will, when you look, it will be a direct, it can be directed to these, uh, these children's hospitals across the country.
Sir, your time is up. Please. Thank you. Chad Heilman.
Still, I don't understand. I gave what I'm about to say, uh, I had a lot of careful thought. Many of you are well aware of the organization that I work for and the work that we do. But in the end, I felt the necessary stand up for my son and my daughter and address this board in regards to whether or not my children will be forced to wear masks nearly every day for six hours a day for the next potentially nine months. Let me start by pointing out that it is crystal clear, we are all here because we care about our children deeply and we want what's best for them. And that, in and of itself, is a beautiful thing. In that, we are united. Unfortunately, thanks in large part to our media outlets and how politicized this issue has become, the topic of masking our children has caused great division across every community of America, and rebellion is no exception. Ultimately, every one of us, every one of us in this room has had almost two years to take in information, share stories, consult with medical professionals, examine the data, and read the research. And I can guarantee that not one of us came here tonight because we're on the fence about where we stand on this issue. We have all made up our minds already, using sound science and verifiable data, and are simply trying to do what is best for our kids and advocating on their behalf. And yet, we have come to drastically different conclusions about the risks and rewards of masks. I have the findings of 47 scientific studies that show masks provide no benefit to stopping the spread of the virus. I also have the findings of 32 studies that show masking children, specifically children, causes more harm than good and puts them at a 13 times greater risk to catch a respiratory virus. That study specifically, that study specifically was done by MIT. All 79 of these studies barely scratched the surface of what is out there to make the case that masks are not helpful in stopping the spread of viruses. It literally says it on the box. Dr. Fauci himself stated, quote, "Wearing a mask might make people feel a little bit better, and it might even block a droplet or two, but it is not providing the protection people think that it is. And often, there are unintended consequences," end quote. And it is those unintended consequences, specifically social emotional development, that worry most of us as parents and outweigh any benefit of masking a population that has a 0.003% chance of catching CB-19, COVID-19 and dying. 0.003%. From a statistics and research-based standpoint, that number is zero. Starting, since the start of January 2020, 335 children under the age of 17 have died of COVID-19, and all of them had underlying health conditions. In that same time period, 49,725 children of the same age group died from other causes. I understand that even one child dying is one too many. But masking an entire school district for a statistically 0% chance of a child dying is reacting in a way that causes unforeseen effects in both the short term and long term that are far more costly than the virus itself. I also understand that there are folks in this room who have just as many studies as say the exact opposite. And that's the fundamental issue here. There is piles of science on both sides. To me, this decision is simple. If you believe wearing a cloth mask reduces your chance of catching and spreading a virus and its benefits outweigh its costs, then have your child wear one. If you don't, then don't. No one loves their child more than their parent. No one has done more research on behalf of their child than their parent, which is why the only fair and equitable decision is to let the parent decide. Which is what we have done as a free nation in regards to all medical decisions for our entire lives.
Do you mind if I make your research with us, with the board? Thank you. All right, uh, next up is Denise Owens.
Hello. Everything that everyone has said up until this point, I think, has merit, and I stand behind most everything that everyone has already said, so I don't want to reiterate or waste anyone's time. But I really affirm that my choice, my body, my child, and I should have that decision whether she's going to breathe carbon dioxide for eight hours a day. That should be my decision. And will someone, will you be responsible, should she get a disease, some kind of respiratory problem, for wearing a mask? And if you will, then I'm okay with her wearing a mask. If, if you'll stand behind if she were to get sick.
It's a assumption of liability.
Because the vaccine companies don't have any liability. Who has liability? You tell me what I need to do for my daughter, but you're not going to say that if something happens, then I'm responsible. So that's all I have to say. So kudos to everyone who did their homework.
Ross Owens.
My name is Russ Owens, and I'm an Erie County resident and pay taxes into Erie County. I wanted to address a couple of things. I wanted to address the masks, and then I also wanted to address the teachers' union. First, as it relates to masks, I noticed that, Phil, you're wearing a mask at this meeting where you didn't wear a mask at last. I'm wondering why that might be.
And you were in a smaller room last night.
After looking at, as Mr. Heilman said, after looking at the evidence that can be put on both sides of this equation.
So there was evidence?
Looking at the flow chart. This came from the Ohio Department. Do you want?
No, I just wanted to know, I think you're answering it. There was further evidence that you are stating that now, I think you, you think you should wear the mask. And what is that evidence, is what I'm going to answer.
The, using the Ohio Department of Education flow chart, and looking at what that allows us to do in terms of not having to quarantine students in our school. I think it's the best example that I could use then to wear a mask and recommend to our board that choice then, or that...
And not, not parents' choice, for the children?
Once again, that's why we're here to, to listen to you and be respectful of, of the people that are up here.
So, um, you're a doctor. And you're a health official from Erie County.
You're a doctor, you're a medical doctor.
I am. So, all right, my question is, do you know what size the coronavirus, well, coronavirus is? Do you know what size it is, sir? Do you know what size it is? What is it? What size? Point what? It's point, it's point 01 microns. Point 0. Point 0. And this is a HEPA filter. This is the filter that was developed to be used in nuclear submarines or by our Navy to filter out particulates. This HEPA filter, which is the best filter you can buy, is effective up to point 03 microns. This virus is point 01 micron, point 01 micron. This is a HEPA filter. Can you see? It is a point 01 micron. It's a nano micron. This filter, I'll let you guys look at this filter. That filter, that filter will, will not catch a point 01 micron, which is the coronavirus micron. This is what you're wearing. This is what you're wearing. And the people that came up here and wore the mask, the mask that you're wearing, you have gaps in it. If you have gaps up here, you have gaps down there. You have gaps all over yours. Yours is ridiculous. And the people that were up here, their masks, this is what you're, this is what you're clinging to. This is irrational hysteria. Something that that filter will not even capture. It's ridiculous. And as it relates to the teachers' union, I must say, last night, I was at a restaurant here in town where three teachers were maskless and were then to feed each other, here locally. And I was at Rudy's over the weekend, and I saw three vermillion teachers who were there who did not have masks on. None, zero. And yet, you're telling me that it's okay for them to do that, and yet, when they come here, all of a sudden, it changes. This is what you think is protecting you. It's ridiculous.
Thank you. Erin Cruz.
My name's Erin. I have a 11th grade student at my school. First thing I want to clear up is that a virus itself is not suspended in the air. It is trapped in the droplets. So that is why you wear a mask. First of all, first of all...
Please let her speak.
Yeah, we don't need to... We knew...
Please speak in the microphone.
We knew before the school year started that masks worked to prevent the spread of diseases. Lots of masks have been worn for 100 years to prevent the spread of diseases. My son, who had asthma, experienced anxiety, depression, social isolation last year when I put him on remit to attend school online. I wanted to keep him safe until the time that he could make the decision to get vaccinated. He wanted to come back to school this year, knowing the risk, but hoping that people would do the right thing in that step. That is not happening here and across the state. And as of today, three schools that I know of have changed to virtual learning. The reasons I am advocating for return to not staying in school is twofold. To protect our students and to protect our teachers. If there are no students to teach because they are all in quarantine, school closes. If there are no teachers available to teach the students because they are in quarantine, school closes. For the American Academy of Pediatrics, remote learning highlighted the inequities in education, was detrimental to the educational attainment of students of all ages, and exacerbated the mental health crisis among children and adolescents. To keep our school open and safe, the AAT, the Erie and Lorraine County Boards of Health, recommend the following. All eligible individuals should receive the COVID-19 vaccines. And all students older than two years old and all school staff should wear masks at school. They also recommend to continue to take the multipronged approach, including universal mask use, ventilation, testing, quarantine, and cleaning and disinfecting. Based on these recommendations, I've asked the school board to adopt a policy of universal masking from school. I do have a study of a California school...
Wear a T-shirt. I'm sorry, no, it slipped. I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Trying to abuse my kid, excuse me. Well, your kid got vaccinated at the school, didn't they?
This is a study...
Please let her speak.
A California school where a teacher was unvaccinated, was an elementary school, she was unmasked, she was reading to the class, 18 out of 26 of her students got COVID. I'll leave that for you. I will leave the recommendations. It's on public record that all of the counties, Erie County, Lorraine County, which we're also part of, recommend universal masking. Thank you.
Thank you.
No, students don't die, but they bring it home to their family and their rare parents and their new compromised family members. My kids does work.
All right, thank you. Yeah, uh, we've got... We've gotten, uh, by time here, 32 minutes. I would ask, uh, right now, that we probably need to take a bathroom break. Let's take a, a little bit of a determined here and then come back in five minutes. I think that there's plenty of bathrooms around the, uh, school here, so please take a bathroom break and we'll come back for these last speakers. Okay, if everyone will return their seats, please, so that we can resume with the public participation. Thank you. All right, at this time, Scott Haber.
Whether or not you improve this mask mandate tonight, at best, it is a Band-Aid approach. We need to be looking at the bigger picture. First of all, it's a month, correct? It's still October 4th, you need. They last till then. And then you're going to reevaluate it. Mind you, you think this is correct. It's not for any high school here. It's correct. Thank you. I haven't voted on it yet, and I want my time stopped any time I'm in trouble.
You didn't honor it for me, why should you honor it for me?
One month. I also like you to consider, and I'm thinking myself for saying this, we should do more of this. Not, I'm not going on a mask. I'm just, whoopie doo. Anyway, every two weeks, assume with the community, update the community on the cases, because it's changing rapidly. Update the community with the cases, reevaluate, and maybe we need to make another decision. But during this month, if you have, I am asking the board to look into other things. A Band-Aid, a, a mask mandate is a Band-Aid approach. It doesn't solve all the things. We need to be looking at better ways to protect our kids. We need to be looking at social distancing. We need to be looking at giving them breaks so they can breathe, get outside, get some fresh air, take the mask off. Alternative forms of scheduling. Maybe we've been looking at the virtual option, if that is a possibility. It's not the virus. It's changing, and we're learning more and more about it. As everybody has said before, we, tons of people cited studies that say masks work, masks don't work. That's not the point. The point is, what do we do to help? Okay? What else can we do? And there's more we need to step up and do. Okay? So look at these things, consider these things. As Mrs. Green said, there's tons of different things we have to look into to protect the kids. And I'm just reiterating what she said, okay? So if we need, if we have staffing concerns and there's money that's necessary to back it up, if we need volunteers, we as a community need to step up, all of us need to step up. If we need money, if we need a levy on the ballot, so we can get support, we can get safety measures put in if we need it, we can get staffing, then we need to support that. Okay? You can't say no to everything.
Yes, we can.
Yes, we can, but it won't work.
Do you have? You're not my son's father.
Over and over and over. No.
What do you?
You keep saying no, but get your name on the ballot.
I am.
Put, put, get your name on the ballot. And I hope so. And those say, Mrs. Jones, I hope the guys, you guys are breaking the law to forget this report, keep these kids safe. I want you to break the law.
Wow.
I want you to do it. And but don't stop at just a minute. That's what I'm saying, do not stop at just a minute. There's more we can do, there's more we all have to do, and we have to do it together. Freedom of choice is very important in this issue. Parents does have the choice in it, but we also have to consider our responsibility. We don't have freedom if we are not responsible for ourselves and for each other. There's no such thing as freedom, just all fear of life. And with that in mind, thank you.
Thank you.
You taught that to me. I'm saving. I changed my speech a little bit after hearing a lot of this. I didn't come as prepared, but first I want to thank you all for being volunteers and sitting here tonight and listening to rational and irrational people. And it's not an easy decision you're about to make. I want none of you to resign from this board, and I know everything you do is in the best interest of the kids and for the public. But if tonight, we were not making this decision, I'd rather focus on the kids, focus on ways to keep them apart, but yet together, some simple things are not easy to come by, maybe partitions between tables clear so they can seat one another and talk to another at school. I know one of the most difficult times is lunches. I don't know, you know, maybe clear partitions. I worry about losing the teachers. I don't know this, I didn't do my study on this. Maybe masking staff and teachers will help us keep them there. I mean, if they're near a kid, will they not have to quarantine? I don't know, you know. Last one thing, I work in a lot of government facilities, we are required to wear masks there. I don't like it, you know, but in order to keep my, doing what I'm doing and providing, I wear a mask eight hours a day. I don't like it. As you see, I'm standing here without one. It is a choice, so. Again, thank you all for making this hard decision and doing what's best and right for the community. Maybe we can continue, I'm hoping that if a kid does get quarantined, that we're already talking about how to keep them at least virtual and able to look at the teacher. I mean, they may not have to participate, but at least it's more, they can watch their class, sign on to their class. I hope we, in the near future, if it isn't there capable, I think it's a matter of just clicking maybe Zoom or something and having that kid is able to watch the teacher upfront. We know kids are going to get quarantined, people are going to be there. I think those are the things we should also focus on. Thank you.
Thank you. Mallory Shirey?
Shirey.
Mallory?
Hi, Mallory Shirey.
Sorry.
Hello, everyone. My name is Mallory Shirey. Probably none of you actually know me. This is my first year at Vermillion. I have Chi Hoy Lucky, who is thirteen, he's in eighth grade at the high school, his first year, and my son Gage, who is just turned five, and he's attending the preschool program. This is a very hard subject for me, and I'm sure it is for all of you, and I appreciate you being here and allowing us this opportunity to speak our truth to you first and foremost. I also appreciate everyone's speeches before me that are giving us the facts and the statistics regarding COVID and the deaths accordingly, as well as the transmission rates. I'm a registered nurse of over ten to eleven years. I have worked everywhere from emergency room for nearly six years, and I've worked at St. Vincent in Toledo during the COVID pandemic for nearly a year, as well as in rehab hospitals and long-term acute care hospitals. So I just want you to know my scope of practice is everywhere from ER to floor nursing, which is not just floor nursing, I work in the float pool, so I'm everywhere from neurology, orthopedics, to the heart center, after heart cast, and everything in between. So I've seen it all, all the different stages, the people coming in initially sick, the people in the hospital, the people after the hospital into the long-term acute care, and then even some that follow up with the rehab. My vision is clear, COVID is real. COVID is scary. I've had COVID, but COVID is not going away. And what you're telling me today that this is just a temporary mandate, just something we're going to rid us in a month, I'm sorry, sir, I appreciate you and I appreciate you being here for our kids, but these are our children, these are our heart and our soul. And you have to kill me before I give an untasted shock to my child. And this is just a test. You're a very educated son who thrives in school, who thrives around his friends, throws on football cases, and all advanced classes, studying students so dedicated, I don't want him to keep him at home, but this is hurting his emotional and mental health. They're not seeing faces anymore? You guys are separating authors, no sense of community. I mean, I'm literally shaking because that is how strong I feel about this. The generations are changing, and we need to be there for them, we need to be good leaders and setting good examples, not hiding back and cowering in fear of our virus that don't exist either way. You're saying that HEPA filter, I will ever remove you, ever remove you. These masks are not protecting. If a kid coughs in your face and, you know, the droplet's going to come on you? Yeah, it's going to stop the droplet, but this has airborne transmission, and I want you to understand as a nurse who has dealt with this, this is transmitted airborne. I wore it all the time, I still got COVID with an airy cap, but that's our choice in America. We can live in Europe, but we can't. And if you're in America to kick teeth, you. That is your way and your choice. I'm in this choice, that's why we give America the land of the free. Our responsibility to our children, and you're not my son's dad, and you're not my child's mom, and we each have our own children to worry about, and I just want our children prospering for all of the community and get theirness together, because the best thing for our children now is natural immunity. I've already answered, we would be willing to talk to you about all of the ways that we can make our community more healthy, including organic function. I mean, your kids are getting cancer, and basically everything. Have you guys been to any seminars to learn about these things? They're constantly made poisoned. And these aren't big things just made up. I mean, they say they want to promote healthy well-being, but I'm not seeing any, any activities that are promoting that, other than masks wearing. And every one of you that I've seen come up here has been touching it the whole time, touching it, and you can't even keep your own hands up of your mask, how do you accept my four, my five-year-olds? And who can't even wear them? You make daily government of your. I appreciate your sign and thank you for letting me.
Your time is up, thank you.
Thank you.
Sarah Jones. Sarah Jones. Sarah Jones. Next is Peggy Sue Johnson.
Hello, can you guys hear me? Okay. So we have, me and Adam, actually, I have three kids in the school, two in the high school, one in middle school. Last year, I experienced masks with a third grader, and he always came home, I would pack multiple masks, so I heard at one point someone said, "The mask get dirty, the mask get wet", and someone yelled, "Pack multiple masks." We did that. They're covered in Cheetos, they're covered in spit, they're not on their face, they're on their head, they're behind their head, they're swathing masks, give me your Spider-Man mask, give me your, you know, give me your SpongeBob mask. It's not going to work, a mask isn't going to work, especially in younger kids. Our oldest opted to stay online because he didn't want to come to school and wear a mask, and that was his choice. And that's what it's about, choice. I have a sister in Tennessee who's a teacher, they didn't have a choice, they had to wear masks. Their schools are closed, it didn't stop it, it doesn't stop it. I have another sister who keeps all three of her children at home, that's her choice. It's a choice that we get to make, not you.
All right, apparently this is running out of batteries, but Kathleen Heinz.
At the beginning, she said I was new, and nobody ever talked to her. So I do want to start off, thank you guys so much for everything you did last year. Last year, we were kind of like, you know, Bob, none of us really knew what was going on, so, you know, you guys were the best, you guys possibly could have done, and I totally appreciate that, and we spent, especially the new Vermillion schools and stuff. So I did want to start with that, and I did write something, I didn't have much time, but I did look at it. Okay, so I have four children in this district, and one has special needs autistic. I'm also new to this district, my major degree specifically because of Vermillion's reputation and because of your schools. So I had an option, I chose here. My son, who's autistic, just started with you guys this year, actually, this week, because I wasn't happy with where he was at previously at Charter School and because of your mask policies specifically. He's autistic, he can't read emotion from your eyes, he needs to see your face, and with other kids at stake, he doesn't know how to react to people without seeing your face. I am not quite sure whether there's any issue involved in masks. You are more than welcome to mask your child if you feel that's a threat to them, to their health, that is your right as their parent, however, it is not anyone's right to make decisions regarding masking my children. That decision is only their father's and mine. COVID is not going anywhere, like everybody else has stated. We've all come to that conclusion. We are not going to eradicate COVID and any other variant. The science that COVID is not a risk toward youth. If the child gets COVID, they have a ninety-nine, they have a ninety-nine point nine-nine-five percent chance of survival. Research also shows that children are not super-spreaders. That was a telltale beginning of this pandemic. If you are a vaccinated adult, then you're at no risk, that's how vaccinations work. I think we all kind of forgot that. If it works. Then you're at no risk, and if your child is too young to succeed, then you have the right to mask them, you're their parent. I was there for Monday at school's tour in Monday, majority of your students aren't wearing masks, that should tell them everything you need to know. I feel like we're parents who drive their students to school because of your mask policy, if you see the drop off come up, it's insane. And I get your bus thing, federal funding, whatever. That should tell you where your parents have the issue, it's not your right to tell parents what to do in regards to their children's health. Our children come to school, learn math, science, language, art, and social studies. It is not the place that schools call clinical trials or testing. That is between a parent and their child in nutrition, and not a cure physician. We are all adults, able to make decisions regarding the children we are raising. I feel like you have, I feel like I've been tricked by you, by this district. You, you parents did not want to mask their children, so you announced no masks to then try and bring them back at the beginning of the school year. But Ray's saying schools did the exact same thing, and now their kids are wearing masks. They went to a school that will be, and then they forced them into it. So this is not just one school district. Oh, yeah, they want their money. It also wants money, because F T and C two are all funded by Dick Parker, so, and then that. I have a lot of data regarding mask and health versus children, masking not only affects them physically, but their emotional health and social development, it dehumanizes us. My daughter's face breaks out to where she looks like she has a flesh bleeding disease all over her mouth. My oldest has constant headaches, which didn't occur before masking. Governor Dewine and all these other career credit organizations are asking for masks, but there's no mask mandate and no, there is no sign to prove the risk to children. It's so great that the children need to mask and quarantine if they have not been around putting diagnosis while not having symptoms. There's no COVID test. The creator of machines we use has publicly stated that it is never to use the diagnostic tool. You can find anything when you multiply and multiply and multiply and looking at cell. You can find, as far as in COVID, it is not a new disease. It was here in two thousand fifteen, there's a hundred forty-eight thousand cases, there's four thousand five hundred masks. What's so funny is that President Obama, the Texas, five years, only another one. COVID is not a death disease under Ohio statute either, so I don't know why you speak to have this authority. In conclusion, do the right thing, educate, leave the parenting up to the parents. Now, if you mask, I am pulling my kids out of this district. If you also want to, you can get ahold of me at K A T E B three one eight six at gmail dot com, and we'll start organizing and set up a grid that we can all work together.
Tannis Van Cost.
First, I would like to start by saying that I am a student at this school and see the day-to-day effects that a lot of this has had. And I would just like to say that whilst masks may not be able to stop a hundred percent of the cases, masks are still doing something. And I feel like the alternative is, whether or not like it's fair or whatever, like masks or being online, and as a senior, I don't really want my senior year and all of my courses to be forced online because people don't want to mask their kids. I asked kids at school today, I said, "Would you rather have to wear a mask or would you rather be online and have to do virtual again?" And ninety percent of the children I asked said, "Yeah, masks are kind of inconvenient, but also like, that's better than being online." So like, even if people don't think that those are the only two options, so far, those are the only two options that we have, so.
We're going to get to the point where we're going to interrupt the student. Come on, let him speak, thank you. You matched your time, you spoke, you matched your time. Let him speak, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Calvin. I would also like to say that online would be so detrimental to grades and things, I was a student who could maintain As and Bs, but I went online, that got a lot harder. So I feel like by masking, if there's even a chance that masking students can help keep us in school, that that is a risk we need to take. I also would like to point out that I have been wearing a mask fairly consistently and that I have very regular bronchitis. I've had bronchitis for years before the mask, and I have, so I already have a bad immune system, and I have not had all of these other issues pop up because of the mask. So whilst some studies have suggested that, I do feel like there are, a lot of those have failed peer reviews, and therefore should not be taken as scientific fact if other people in the scientific community have pointed out the numerous flaws in those studies. I would also like to say that the death rate is very humbly brought up, and whilst the death rate for students is very low, there is a much higher chance that these students get long-term lung cancer, lung. these students get long-term lung damage, lung damage, and long-term lung issues, and have to go on ventilators for the rest of their lives. And I would just like to say, like, you know, even if I have a low chance of dying, I really kinda don't wanna end up on, like, a breathing machine. So, like, if we can take the necessary precautions to try and prevent that, that would be preferable. I would also just like to ask the question, because I know a lot of people have kinda brought up the teachers, I would like to ask that what would happen, do you think, if the teachers got sick and were no longer able to be here? Like, let's say kids can't get it, but kids have it, like, the, you know, have it, but like, the, whatever it was when it was asymptomatic. What happens when kids who are asymptomatic give it to their teachers? We no longer have teachers, and there's already a national teacher shortage. So, I feel like, and people may shrug it off, but like, without teachers, we kinda can't have school. So, even if it's not for your kids, do it for your kids' education, and just, I don't know, I would like to suggest that we do masks, and like, even if they don't work, there's not really repercussions, as many studies have proven. And I'd just also like to remind people that a lot of the studies, early on, that suggested this, were under the pretense that the coronavirus was not airborne, and now that the, when that coronavirus was discovered to be airborne, that a lot of the studies, including the masks aren't useful studies, have been defunct since that point, because research has continued. Thank you. All right, I would also like to thank the board for their public service essentially, as their volunteers. Thank you. You're welcome.
All right, the last one on the list tonight, Katie, and I'm not sure about the last name, sorry.
It's okay, it's your one. So, I just started a really good talk with people on that, but it helps me, and I wasn't planning on coming here, but I'm here. So, I have to start off with that I wanna ask if we're at eight cases, correct? We've said this number multiple times. Last year at Thanksgiving, and correct me if I'm wrong, we shut down at Thanksgiving due to ten cases, correct? So, we're only two cases away from it. And if I'm wrong, I'm wrong tonight, well, like you said earlier, I will totally admit to it. So, we're gonna do a mask for one month, which potentially leaves you almost up to that Thanksgiving period time again, where we're going to be potentially shut down again and go virtual. There's a lot of factors who's going online. I had multiple children at my house last year doing online schooling. They've all had different students, or different grades, different teachers, all of that. You have to take into account what it affects on the children, if it's wrong, also with a parent, and now it's gonna have to stay home. There's already somebody talking about the shortage of people working in the workforce. I would not be able to work, and I currently work under Rachel Whitson, Harvard Millian School District, so I'm now out of a job if we go to an online scenario with this. I guess my thing would go back to, if you want to put a mask on your child, that is your choice. You are able to do that, that is your protection, that is your barrier, that is what you want to do. There's more than one thing that goes into account for this. Death is social, emotional, and all of that. But if that mask protects you, then why do you care so much if somebody is not wearing the mask? My children are under the age of getting a vaccine. I have a kindergarten, second grade, and a fourth grade. I won't talk politics, I won't talk science, and I won't talk medical. It is all logic. My children are being punished per se, and they're not even eligible to get a vaccine. That's not in my control. They can't. And I'm not saying that I would get it if they can, I'm not saying that I wouldn't if it gets down to that point. There's so many factors, and everybody else has said it, I don't know if I would want any of your tests. I don't know if I would voluntarily put myself on a ballot because of this, but like others have said, it's not going away. But we have to take into account multiple things. You have from preschoolers who don't even understand a mask, to seniors that don't wanna go online, which I can appreciate, and you have everything in between. You're not just affecting the kids who are putting them in a mask, you're affecting the homes. You're affecting, in my case, I wouldn't be able to work at this school. So, I now don't have an income, yes, there were other tests, but per se, I don't have that income because I have to stay home. My children are nine and younger, they cannot stay home by themselves. That's affecting more than everybody's statistics and all of their data, which I'm not discrediting, but that's just one more factor that you have to look into. I've worked in the schools, I didn't last year, but I had in the previous years, the kids who eat two to three meals a day at school. Who's to say that they're getting fed at home? What abuse are they having at home that teachers are not seeing because they're online? I mean, I get it, and I will hardly know if you guys get it too, a lot of you are get teachers, you're in the medical field, you've been doing it for years, but it's just one more thing to be brought up. We're not the worst school district in the world, but you have to take into account that children are technically safer in school, from abuse, neglect, all of that. And again, I'm not discrediting anybody's science and medical research and all of that about all of it, but the kids that I've worked with, they one thousand percent were safer in school than sitting at home having an older sibling who then has to feed them, get them ready, get them on, I don't know, whatever. It is a lot for me, with all these eight kids that I had in different grades and teachers. I can't imagine a thirteen-year-old or seventeen-year-old in charge of their five-year-old, brother or sister or whatever, so, that's all.
That was the last person on the list, and let me just speak for a few minutes about tonight's meeting and comment, and then I'm gonna turn it over to the board president. From a personal standpoint, from a superintendent's standpoint, I can tell you that every decision, certainly that I've made, is not always been the right one. I'm human. I can and do make mistakes, just like everyone that's sitting out there. And my job is to reflect, and think, and talk, and I could say that I can't think of any subject like this that is taught, that has been talked about as much as this one, since I've been in the district, and this is my fourteenth year. And it deserves that, though, because it's a polarizing, tough subject, and it's an emotional subject, and I get it, I understand that. And once again, when I said that in my talk tonight, I'm sure that the board members have thought about this and talked about this, and just as much as I have, because they should, just like you have, as an adult, because you, it's just, that's the way it is. What I can say about that, some of the things that were said tonight, I heard some people come up here that were very articulate and very able to express themselves, and then we heard some, as someone said, some irrational ways of expressing yourself. And I don't think that that was, that you meant to do that, or that you want to do that, but you're emotional about it, we get it, we understand it. And we wanted tonight to be able to give you this opportunity to do that, no matter what or how it came from you, because that's what we should be doing, standing up here tonight, sitting up here tonight, giving you that chance, looking you in the eye, and taking what we took here tonight. That's our jobs, we're here to serve you. We're servants of you, this is true. And I know every single board member here believes that. They're not, they're not here for money, and I can say that that's not my motivation, and I'm not corrupt to sit here and say that, oh, I'm doing this all for the money and federal funds. That doesn't have any, has had nothing to do with my decision to make a recommendation here tonight for this, zero. And if you wanna think that way, that's fine. I mean, 'cause I can't change the way you think. Your perception is your reality. I get it. So, I'm gonna turn this over to the board president tonight. I just wanted that to be known, though. Thank you for being here tonight, thank you for expressing your opinions and your thoughts, and I respect what you have to say, I think about what you have to say. I'm gonna go back and think about what everybody said in this room tonight. And so, at this point, I'm gonna turn it over to the board president.
Okay. Thank you all for coming today and expressing how you feel to us. I truly wrote down things that every single one of you have said. I have everyone's names written down, I have quotes from every one of you, and there is a lot here to consider. And I know that some of you feel like our decisions were made before we got here, that is not the case, at all, is so much not the case, that I, as president, am going to suggest that we table this for tonight, I need more time, I want to make the right decision, I don't know why that's wrong.
Let it go, you guys, let it go, you don't have to do this. Let it go. Just, I'll take a minute to speak. I'll take a minute to speak. I taught nineteen years in second grade for some dusty school. I have a kid in kindergarten here, and one in fifth grade. Do I want my boys to wear masks? Absolutely not. But I will tell you this, I don't want them on virtual. I don't want my second graders in some dusty one virtual, because I saw my first graders in here.
It's not yours, it's not about the other.
Why do you think one or the other?
Well, here's the thing. If my district tells me, tells me, says, "We'd like you to wear masks, and students wear masks to keep you in the seats," that's why I want my kids in the seats. As a teacher, I make the choice.
We don't understand why.
Why what?
Why is it one or the other? Why, why is it?
Because if we start quarantining staff, which we-
You're saying it's gonna go virtual.
No, if we don't do that, she said, if we went to ten, like, Thanksgiving, we would-
I would have that point.
Because at Thanksgiving, we shut down at ten, we're already at eight. I was saying that we're only two cases away from it.
Eric, can I, can I address one thing, and I'll send it back to you? That, the person that asked for those numbers, here's the thing, and I don't wanna debate this or argue this, but here's the, here's the problem, our food service people were the ones that got affected and quarantined. And therefore, we, we're gonna try to find a way to make that work, but I can't guarantee you that that, that we would be able to shift and find enough people to make that work.
I'll donate my time to help.
Okay.
You have to pay one million dollars.
All right, and I'm not saying that we wouldn't say that there's other ways, if, you know what, people are not that easy to hire at this point, either, that's a problem.
That's right.
And volunteers are not as easy as you think it is either, because then-
Twenty-one million dollars.
All right, you know, once again, you know, the, what, sir, you're not, what, for me to try to talk to you, there's no rationalization.
Twenty-one million dollars.
You wanna out yell us, you wanna out yell everybody in the room, that's evidence since the minute you walked in.
You had to stop lying since you started.
All right, yeah, you know what? One thing that I just don't take is disrespect, and that's, that's what you are, you're a disrespectful person.
Well, you're disrespecting me, my son, my teacher, my youth.
Okay, I'll just come here and try to out yell everybody, you think that that's gonna make your point? That's not gonna work.
You won't tell the truth.
Okay, I'm not, I'm not here-
You broke the law.
I'm telling you what I know is the truth. And that's the way it is.
You're trying to fuck your ass, and you know-
You know what? Knock it off. You know, really, it's no disrespect.
This is my kids' education.
Okay, all right, you know.
Not at all?
I, I've heard it, I've heard it.
We're virgin. Yeah, you're gonna continue it.
Thank you, all right, thank you, all right. Eric, sorry.
My main goal as an educator, and being a board member, is to make sure our kids are here at school. Whether that requires them to wear a mask or not, I have to make that choice, it's a tough choice, 'cause I don't want my kids to wear masks, but I do want them in school, because they're gonna get the best education being in a seat with a teacher. And with that, I, as a second grader, don't like wearing masks, because my kids rely on seeing my mom move her phonics and teaching them, and it's important, but they don't see it when they're virtual. I taught virtual all last year, and I will tell you, my kids, they went from second to third grade, to first, to my classroom, have slid backwards. Not one of them has had a gain in any test scores or any curriculum. And there is a issue where it's a teacher. We have one sub that covers thirty-five teachers in our building, is industrial, one sub. She is now covering a classroom where a teacher has COVID. So, we have no subs. We have principals that staff up, we have our staff members cover, I cover two classes one day, this charity, three days I cover two classes, because that teacher's out.
So, one of you, you guys still wear the mask, and, okay, so you guys, everybody has to wear masks, and they're still getting sick, and our still teachers, look out, and we're still getting sick. This is for-
It could be worse.
It could, it could all, it could all be worse than that.
You guys are just buying, you can't do the job.
But your kids are masked, so don't you like it, say.
If it has to hurt, then you shouldn't worry about my kid not wearing one.
No.
Yeah.
You bring the mask, and stop it.
Especially, you know, as a parent, I truly, truly do, I get it, I really do, this is going nowhere. Every year, we will be right back here, not as long in this meeting and all this yelling, COVID will be right back here, every year. Ultimately, it comes down to, ultimately, it comes down to, people are going to get sick every year. And as a district, and I hate to do this, because I, myself, and the organization we work for, we have a massive shortage of staff, everybody in the country has a massive shortage of staff, but that is unfortunately your job, is to find staff, it's your job, and it's tough, and it sucks, but it's your job, and that's what you gotta do, that's the only solution. Teachers are gonna get sick with masks, and not, period. Kids are gonna get sick with masks, and not, period. Whether it's COVID or the food or whatever, we have to get through this without mandating something that the vast majority of our parents don't agree with, and is proven to not work, period.
Absolutely. And if it's virtual, every other month, it's not gonna go on for a-
I'm just saying, one, look, you have all had time to speak, I am asking for my four minutes. Please. I am saying that I have a lot of information, we all do, and I am not ready to make a decision tonight. I have two children in this district, I'm concerned about them as well, and I want them to be in school. I personally have not wanted masks, okay? This is not, I was coming up here and saying, "We don't care what you want," that is not the case. I am simply saying, I need more time, and I believe maybe a couple of us need more time, Shelley is not present, I would like to table this, so we can do it properly.
You guys did the last week the same thing, you talked about not wearing masks, and then here we are.
I am simply asking, I would like to make, I'm not asking, I'm saying, I'm gonna take time to make the proper decision. I am not gonna sit here and just make a quick, for irrational decisions, I would like to make the right-
You just don't look like me.
You have no idea what is in my mind, and I don't know what is in your mind, and that's perfectly fine with me. I'm simply asking for a little respect, and I'm saying, I'm gonna table this for tonight, and I'm gonna, we will adjourn, and we will let you know when that meeting is, so that we can make the correct decision. Whatever we feel we can do best. That is all I'm saying.
Thank you. I have a question. Is it, so, if it's tabled, then you won't go with the staff until there's a meeting like this?
Correct.
Right.
Okay.
Right. So, that's a good point, right? I think, first of all, thank you, everyone, for coming, thank you for taking the time to stand up and talk, right? It's not an easy thing to do. A lot of passion, Birmingham's a small town, and I think somebody said earlier, it's a polarizing topic, right? So, don't, you know, speak your mind, and I, and I really, truly believe everyone has a right to speak their mind, and, and even to make their own choices, but don't walk out of here and let this tear your community up, okay? You see this on the news all the time, right? You see, you know, people having to be dragged out of these things, and it's not good. So, thank you for coming up and, and saying what you had to say, thank you for taking the two or three hours out of your night to come up and do this, and, and it may not be exactly what you wanna hear, but just knowing that this was tabled, I think you should take a little satisfaction in that enough was said and enough was heard, we hear the community, we know that we need to, to, you know, at least think about this a little harder, and at least consider some more facts. So, you know, hopefully you can take that and know that nothing's gonna happen until, until it's voted on. So, you know, hopefully you can take that and know that nothing's going to happen until it's voted on in a meeting again. So.
And we'll have proper notice, sir?
Absolutely.
Also.
Well, it's like any board meeting, right? So, a board meeting requires 24-hour notice, and I can tell you right now, the next one is September 13th. That's our regular meeting. And, go ahead, you're correct, sir.
I also want to know, under what authority you have to make the mask mandate?
So, here's, this is what I tried to tell you earlier. Part of the board's job is to vote on policy, right? And part of policy is rules. And I can tell you right now, somebody mentioned it earlier, right? My place of employment, I have to wear a mask every day, it's a condition of employment. It's not that they're violating my constitutional right, it's just a condition of employment. So. I understand that, totally understand that. I'm just saying, part of our job is to develop policy.
So, you'll have that exact policy at the next meeting? State why you have the authority to make the mask mandate?
No, they don't address masks particularly, they don't.
Can I tell that you got it?
I don't, I don't say no.
You said that GoPro July, the schoolwork is going. Right.
Sure that you can provide that at the next meeting, right?
If we could get a copy of that, because I asked, you know, when we were on our research, I asked to clarify where that came from, and we discovered July did give you authority to go work, but I'd be happy to find that.
I'm pretty sure it's.
I have a question. So, let's just say, if there is a mask mandate and/or there isn't, then it's parents' choice. This mask, the mask that you're wearing, does not do anything. And you can ask your hearing, pounding official, who I just had discussion, it does nothing. So, if there is a mask mandate, what mask are you going to mandate that will perform better than this mask?
The mask you have.
Good point. Good point and good question, and it's probably something that'll have to be addressed at some point. So, continue, listen, continue to speak your mind, continue to say what you have to say. The only thing I ask is, don't attack people. It doesn't do any good. It doesn't do any good, and it creates a really contentious atmosphere. You know, you guys have good points, you really do, but make your points, don't attack.
Can I say something, sir?
Yes, sir.
This relationship is built on trust. We trust you and our children, all right? We trust you to do the right thing. You took enough, and right now, I feel like you guys have failed miserably, all right?
That's unfortunate. You can, I'm telling you, you can trust this board. Ask a question, we'll get answered.
I don't know if that's true, sir, especially when your leadership acts in the way that he does.
Well, it's a tough, it's a tough subject, and it's been a tough year.
We're not trying to attack, all right? You guys are not being honest with us, and you guys are doing things that could be creepy. And you're not even, you don't even know it. You talked about breaking the sunshine law on tape four times since we started this meeting today. That's why we're upset. You're failing. Our kids are being failed, and you're not doing anything about it. All you're trying to do is put a rag on their face to try to make it all better. You're still failing our kids. And if you can't fix this, then you need to resign and let somebody else do the job that our kids need. That's not going to change in two weeks, two days, two months. That's something that needs to happen right now.
Sir, I can actually believe all of you have a best, our game president, just, I appreciate your work.
Thank you. Can we move on?
Okay. As Chris said, the dates and locations of our upcoming board meetings, we have a regular meeting September 13th, a regular meeting on October 11th, and a regular meeting on November, November 10th. At this time, I'd like to motion to the tables a, the vote for tonight.
I'll make a motion. I'll say it.
Justin, can you please follow?
Mrs. Steph.
Yes.
Mrs. Russell.
Yes.
Mr. Abrams.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yes.
Motion approved for a zero of the table.
Okay, now I'd like to, so now we're going to have a adjournment for our thing.
Make a motion.
Can I ask one question? Not to keep going, but this, but if you're going to table it for two weeks, so then that's only really a two-week mask mandate into October, correct?
There is no mandate.
No, I'm saying if you guys voted for yes, that we do a mask mandate at the next meeting. But we're waiting two weeks until that date, correct?
I don't think we know the answer to that question, and the reason would be because, well, let me answer it, okay? I don't think we know the answer to that question, because you guys have given us a lot to think about, okay? I think if we come back another time, it may be totally different, it may be the same, I don't know. But I think we have a lot to think about, so I don't know that we can answer that question.
So, you're not voting potentially on this at the next meeting? That's what I'm asking. At the next meeting, you're saying that you would be voting, or you may not be voting?
It could be.
We don't want this over our heads forever.
No, 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 that's not what I'm asking.
Understand.
I was just asking if at the next meeting, which is the September 11th.
I would have to believe that it's going to be a hot topic at the next meeting.
So, then it's going to potentially go into the October, so it's going to continue on?
We don't know the answer to that. We need to, we need to evaluate this.
And I totally agree with tabling it, but do you see what I'm saying? Like, you just keep pushing it on. And you already made the assumption of one month, which puts you into October. So, if we don't vote on it, or if you all don't vote on it at the next meeting, and you allow different individuals to come forward and say what they feel, maybe they couldn't come tonight, then you're tabling it again that then goes into October, and it just is going to continue on. I guess I'm trying to understand, at what point are you going to vote?
So, again, I don't think we can comment on when we're going to vote, but I will tell you this, I don't think any of us want to have this subject lingering any longer than it has to. I think we want to, I think we want to address it and address it quickly.
I have a question. I just wonder what kind of protocols are in place for other respiratory, like say, operating with the flu or, you know, whatever, or whatever I said, but are there protocols in place for now? Like, is that a new example, so we can qualify, you know, for this?
Yeah, isn't like 20% of the school have to have the flu before you shut down the school? Why is COVID different?
We have nurses here in our building, and we work with the Huron County Health Department, and we address those things as needed. Do you want to speak to what those protocols are?
Well, do we really need to? Again, with regard to the protocols, we absolutely. Well, hold on, I mean, you want the truth? The truth is, I don't think we have the answer to that. COVID is something that none of us have ever experienced in our lives. It's crazy, it's messed up, and we, and, you know, I think everybody has done the best they could. I think last year was a tough year, right? And I think we got through it, right? It's not necessarily what we want to do this year. But you're asking, you know, for like a rule, and there's no rule. This is something we've never experienced.
So, I'm talking specifically about the flu, not COVID. And how many students have to get the flu before you shut down? Not COVID.
I don't know if there's a number, is there? I mean, I, and, you know, I went to school here in the 80s, I never remember the school shutting down for flu.
I had one time when I was here, they shut down the school and they cleaned everything.
So, how many was it?
I don't exactly know, but I know that there is some kind of precedent. Or.
I think it, isn't it, I mean, isn't it some kind of a feel or a type of law, right? You know, you're sitting there and you're saying we got to do something?
I know it's not across the entire school, but across all three schools, I know that.
Exactly.
So, that's what we're looking at. So, you're saying that you're going to shut down the entire schools at 10?
Nobody said that.
What number is that?
Nobody said that.
We haven't said that. That's the working number.
That might be what happened last year. And a lot of what happened last year was a result of projections of what, and what everyone thought was going to happen, and a lot of, I'll be honest, with a lot of fear, right? I don't think we knew how this was going to impact us, right? So, you know, you can, you can make it sound like we made horrible decisions and make it sound like, like we did these things in a vacuum and didn't consider things, but that's not true. And a lot of people did the best they could and made a lot of decisions to try and protect people, and it was always made with the best interest of people at heart, okay? And when you look back on it, there's probably a lot of things we did well, there's probably a lot of things we didn't do well. So, we learn from it, and we move on. That's just how it is.
So, you don't have to answer that?
Oh, there's no answer.
So, I just want to, I want to make sure that you're on the record saying that it could be 50 cases, it could be eight cases. Who makes that decision? Who makes the final call on if you have to go virtual? Who makes that decision?
Well, and the shortage of staff.
In relation to the flu, or the relation to COVID, or which one are you asking?
How many students, staff, whatever, do you have to have before you shut down the school? What's the hard, fast number?
The answer is that there can't be a hard number that you apply to, because it depends on what's affected by it. You're asking for a number that I can't quantify with an exact number. That's the question.
You guys have taken Walmart here. If you shut down, if you have to shut down.
I'm going to continue on with my adjournments, and we are going to move on. We are tabling this for the next meeting, and you are all going to welcome to show up, and that is fine. But I would like to address these calls, the role for our adjournment.
Mrs. Steph.
Yes.
Mrs. Russell.
Yes.
Mr. Abrams.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson. Yes.